There you go. It's recording.
Time is now six thirty-five PM, calling this meeting to session. We're all?
Yeah.
We're live streaming. Present, we have Councilmember Yarborough, Councilmember Rodriguez, Mayor Pro Tem Mize, Councilmember Corneilson, and Councilmember Hodges. We have a quorum present. Tonight, Councilmember Yarborough will be giving us our invocation, so if you can stand for the invocation and the pledge, please.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We pray that your Holy Spirit will reside at this meeting and will guide us, lead us in the way that we should go. We thank you for this day, we thank you for the people who are here, and we thank you most of all for your son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We've had no one sign up for public input. We do not have any mayor council reports, presentations, proclamations, so we'll be moving on to the consent agenda. Item A, discuss and possible action on approval of the godly city council minutes from the regular meeting held on July 2nd, 2024, and the department reports.
Who objects to the minutes? Oh, wait, wait. We gotta do the whole thing at once, sorry. Sorry.
That was different.
I was gonna move along.
That was different, but would you like to make a motion?
Yeah.
Wait, hold on, I have one question.
You can do it through discussion, whatever.
I'll just ask the question.
Sure.
Hey, Andrea, I noticed that it looks like Chicken Express is finally going to be built. Do they know when they're going to be done with it? Chicken Express, they're starting to be built?
Right now, the only thing they're working on is their drive-in.
Okay.
Drive-by. Yes, that's the only thing they have permitted drive this minute.
Okay. Are they, so they're making headway with Tech Dot?
Yes.
Okay.
We, we had a pre-development meeting with them, they have a lot of things to address that were brought up by our planner, so... But they have got started on the driveway, and Tech Dot's approved everything for them.
Okay. That was my only question.
Somebody care to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Start it.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Yarborough and a second by Mayor Pro Tem Mize to approve the consent agenda in its entirety. Is there any further discussion? Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Moving on to new business, item A. Discuss... I'm sorry. Motion passes four to one with one opposing to approve the consent agenda. Thank you. Moving on to new business, item A. Discuss and take possible action adopting ordinance number 07-2024-119, repealing and replacing ordinance number 03-2024-109 regarding the Holiday and Events Committee.
I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance as written.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Rodriguez and a second by Councilmember Yarborough to approve the adopting ordinance number 07-2024-119, repealing and replacing ordinance number 03-2024-109 regarding the Holiday and Events Committee. Further discussion? Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
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 Motion passes five zero to adopt ordinance number 07-2024-119, repealing and replacing ordinance number 03-2024-109 regarding the Holiday and Events Committee. Item B, discussion, take possible action to adopt resolution number R-07-2024-07, adopting the 2024 Johnson County Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Make a motion approving item B as written?
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Councilmember Yarborough and a second by Councilmember Rodriguez to approve item B as written. Further discussion?
I have a couple questions. This has been around before, why hasn't the city joined this program before? Excuse me, Dan.
Council, in 2015, there was a resolution adopted to, where the city did adopt the Hazard Mitigation Plan through the county. There have been some changes to it that the county emergency manager has worked through, and so because of those changes, the city is just required to adopt that again to continue to be able, to be eligible for the FEMA funds, but it was adopted in 2015.
Well, I read it, this is my first time, but okay. I didn't go through a whole bunch of it. What about these costs that they say we have to, that they got, that they put in there for us? Drought expanses, soil extreme heating, create a city-approved plant to support landscaping, costs $5,000 to the city. Another one, purchase and install NOAA radios in schools, government buildings, parks, nursing homes, whatever, estimated cost, $10,000. One for $200,000, I think there was one for a couple of million dollars. One of those, do we have to do those, or?
No, those are county-funded items, from my understanding. I can get more clarification from the Johnson County Emergency Manager, but there shouldn't be a cost to the city. Us joining, basically, if we don't, if we're not a part of that, we're just simply not eligible for FEMA funds. But I have not been told anything about that we, as a city, would be required to pay for NOAA radios and that type of thing. And it is a plan. I don't know that they can require a school to put in NOAA radios even, but the Johnson County Emergency Manager did not discuss any of that with me.
I didn't, because of some other personal stuff going on, I did not look at any of this stuff, other than I just glanced at it and I saw these couple items. How much red tape to where if you want this money, you have to do this, this, and this? I know that comes from a whole lot of the government programs, they give us something.
Right. For, for us as a city, if we had some type of catastrophe, then I have to go to the Johnson County Emergency Manager, and he takes it up the chain to the next level up, and it goes to the state, and then that's how, that's part of the process. If, if we're not a part of the county plan, we have to develop our own plan, and that's why all the member cities, they've done all the work, and we just join in and we're a part of the county plan. Otherwise, we have to develop, and it's a book that thick, you know? I've got a copy of it in the EOC, but it's a lot to it, and there's, it'd be a lot of copying and pasting, to be honest with you, but the city's kind of out there on their own, and you probably would require a full-time person to handle emergency management at that point, to be honest with you.
Is there, if the county's declared a, whatever they do, whatever they have, you know, hurricane, tornado, whatever? Do we have to be part of this to get the money, or do we get it because we've been declared a national, a disaster area? Do we automatically qualify for states and government money instead of federal money?
We can request it, even if the governor hasn't declared something a disaster, we can request. If we've had flooding rains, I think I put that in the communicator, and it took out some of our infrastructure, we can make the request. There's no guarantee that we're gonna get it. When a disaster is declared, certainly, it's much easier to get it, and if a disaster is declared, we ought to be chasing it, but without, without being a part of the plan, we have no option with FEMA, so.
Like I said, I didn't really, I just glanced through it. I, I just see.
On page 130 of that, it says that these were all projects determined by the 2015 local planning team, and that these are all deferred because they're no longer a priority. So it looks like they're not expecting anybody to do any of these anymore.
Because I see these are going back?
Yeah, and then Godly's are right here. And they're all marked deferred. I guess they probably just didn't have time to go in and change them and take them out. But I would like clarity on that, to make sure we're not responsible for either going back and doing that, that's a good point, Roger.
I get that. I, I can tell you that we have to have this resolution adopted by the end of July, and or we're just simply out of the plan and not eligible, so.
And they just presented this to you?
No. I don't remember the date that I got it, but this is the agenda, or the meeting that we selected to put it on.
I think I got it, I think Chief heard it to me after this, yeah, cutoff of the last meeting, but it was in that window between the cutoff and the meeting, and the agenda was already being worked.
Yeah, the Johnson County Emergency Manager had been working on this for a good while, and he just got everything approved and backed, so that's kind of why the timeframe was what it was, but.
As I understand it, it's an all or nothing proposition?
Yes, sir.
We either accept it, or we don't. If we do, we're eligible for FEMA funds, if we don't, we're not.
Correct.
And the only time we're gonna be obligated to do anything, if we're ever obligated, and we don't know that, probably not, but if, is when there's a natural disaster.
Right.
So.
And.
There's no harm in, in, I mean, if we don't, if we're mad about having to do something when there is a natural disaster, we just won't claim the funds.
Right.
Right?
If you, if you wanted to be a part of this, it would be because it's an annual type deal, when anything new is, or changes are made, but you legitimately would have to have your own city emergency plan.
Right, if we don't approve it, but if we do approve it, we don't, we still don't have to participate unless we want to.
And our Johnson County Emergency Manager makes a lot of things easy for us.
So there's really no cost at all if council decides they don't want to take any money from FEMA in a natural disaster that destroys everything in the, in the city?
Correct.
So given that. I didn't say that. What I said, what I'm making the argument is, there's no, there's really no risk in this, because if we don't want to participate, we don't have to.
The only risk is if, is if we get, are hit with a disaster, we will not qualify for funds.
No, 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 we approve it.
Right.
We approve it.
Then, right, there's nothing.
So there's really no reason not to approve this, in my mind. I can't think of an argument not to. Well, like I said, my concern was, do we have to do this stuff? I didn't agree through the whole thing. I got you.
But as it's been?
I see this, it says, you know, you do this, so this, this is ridiculous for us.
Sure, sure. But since we don't have to, we don't worry about that.
And number two, if we don't do it, do we still get emergency funds because of disaster declaration, declaration?
Yeah.
If we have to do this, and we get funds anyway, no, I don't want to do this. I get you. But that's not the case, correct?
It's presented as deferred, right? It's presented as deferred.
Right.
So there's nothing here to hold our feet to the bar, because it says deferred.
I saw the deferred list, yes, and then I saw this list that came after the deferred list, that says this is what you want to do. It'd have been nice that it stamped each one of these things, say it's deferred, but I got you. Like I say.
Any further questions? Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
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 Motion passes to approve resolution number R-07-2024-17, adopting the 2024 Johnson County Hazard Mitigation Plan. Item C, discuss and take possible action on the scope of work for the forensic audit services by Withham Smith &amp; Brown, PC, in the amount of $90,075, and authorize the execution of said proposal.
So I spoke with Alan Nelson and got clarification on the years that will be audited, and I put that in your communicator, and that does include fiscal year 17 through 18, 18 through 19, 19 through 20, 20 through 21, 21 through 22, and 22 and through 23.
Make a motion to approve item C as written?
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Yarborough and a second by Councilmember Corneilson to approve item C in its entirety. Further discussion?
Uh, yes, I would like to see year 23, 24 added to that.
We won't even do audit 23, 24 till next year.
No, well, I meant, yeah, so 22, 23. So this is 24, okay, never mind. I don't know what I was thinking, sorry. I would like, yeah, to see it till last May done.
That's what's on.
Yeah. Sorry.
All good. Do we have all, or have we received all the receipts and records that we need for the audit for 22, 23?
No. There's still some missing. You know, we've gathered as much as we had and put together, I have boxes in my office getting ready for the auditors to come on the 29th. They'll be here for a whole week. That's just on fiscal year 22, 23, so I, I don't, there's some things missing, but Randy will be here with us, our CPA will be here, because he's got a list of, of those items that he did not have receipts for, because he wasn't really sure what category to put them in.
He didn't know how to categorize them, or he never received the receipt?
No, he didn't have the receipts, so he couldn't put them in the right category into N-code, and we want to be able to do that, you know, to get those corrected.
So also, as we move backwards in the fiscal years, the, the list that Mr. Nelson had put out that he required us to provide, do we have, do we have the documents, the receipts, the paperwork that he is requesting to make this a fruitful endeavor?
I'm not sure that we're gonna have everything that he's gonna want, because I know phone records are on there. We should have everything digitally, emails, that kind of stuff. It'll take some time and effort with Dawn retrieving those, but as far as, there are some things that he had on that list that I, you know, and if we don't keep that record, that's fine, we just answer that those records are not kept. But I have seen auditors ask for phone call message pads before, only because some people still use those, and if they do, you know, you keep them, or handwritten receipts, those kind of things. But I can't, I can't answer that honestly with you. I mean, I have, I had a very little window of time myself to go in and pull the records that I knew I was gonna need for the upcoming audit, and during the election, I spent two days here doing that, and getting those prepared for the payables and contracts that we could find. We, we found contracts, got those set up in contract files and those kind of things that we, you know, so that those are all set up and ready to go, but it's 17, 18, I don't know. I don't know until I get in there and start digging a little bit further. We do have everything separated by year now, we spent a lot of time doing that, but we didn't go through every single piece of paper in there, and you do know some financial records are only required to be here for three years. Now, your audits, those are permanent records, those, we have found all that. We've got the, because you only have to have one copy, one original, but like, even budget working papers, you know, they're three to five years that you keep, and so this will be submitted to the city secretary's office to keep as a record for the next three to five years, because this is every piece of working paper that I've used this far in the budget, and that, and if they want anything, they'll find it in there. So those are the actual documented working papers.
So whenever I said I wanted 23 and 24, that's October to May of 24. I know we're doing our annual audit, but would that not be the time while we have those records available to go ahead and add that to the forensic and do a deeper dive into that year also, so that then when we get that forensic audit done, it's current all the way up to the new fifth of the new year?
Well, as soon as they're finished with 22, 23, they will begin on our 23, 24 audit.
Forensic or?
Because we're, no, no, no.
Just the annual?
Just the regular audit. That will start immediately, so as soon as I'm through with this one, they come back. So they'll come here this summer, they're gonna test, I've got all the, I know what they're gonna test, and so, I mean, I know a range of things that they're gonna test, they don't tell you what they're gonna test, and then they hand me the list, and I have to go find the documentation for all of it. If they pull a citation number, I have to be able to, or the court has to be able to pull the jacket, and it should have from start to finish what happened on that case. Finance, if it's a, if it's a project that's over $3,000, I better have three bids to go with it. Can I tell you if these years have that? I have no idea. I can only speak for, since I've been here in October, and when y'all approved the purchasing policy, every employee in the city signed it and agreed to, to do exactly what the state procurement says to do. So I can speak for now, but I can't speak for before me, how that was handled. POs, I know that POs were not here, and that's a big thing with auditors. They're gonna, if they find anything that has a PO number on it, they're gonna want the background on it, so, and I, there were no POs, so we got it started here.
So I still, and since we're in discussion, I still would like to add October 23 to May of 24. I don't know if that needs, has to be voted on or what, but I just want on record that I would like that year also in the forensic audit.
I mean, do you want a forensic audit on that? That's not in the scope of work, so I have to go back and get it.
I know, but we discussed this in the last time we talked about this, that was one of the things I did want to add. Yes, we're doing our annual, but just like with these other ones, it will dive deeper to find out, that was such a transitional period during that one year, so that really needs to be a clean slate for that year, starting with the new administration.
So October of 23 through May of 24?
Well, isn't that the fiscal year?
That'll be.
September.
September, sorry.
October to September.
Yeah.
September? What dates again, September?
It'll be this fiscal, the current fiscal year also.
Oh, this fiscal year.
Yeah. The one that you're, the one that you're doing the annual audit on now, right, is what?
Twenty-two, twenty-three. It was September of twenty-two through October of twenty-three when I got here.
So we wouldn't be able to do the forensic until the annual's done on this year because it's not completely, sorry, till September?
He won't be able to touch it until, I mean, he can, but I, I mean, I beg of y'all not to make me go through two of those at one time. There's no way. I can't handle it. Can't do it.
Those months.
We've got to get at least one audit done and passed us so that we're up to date. And I know, you know, kind of know where we're at on, on the paperwork and how it's been kept and how the records have been kept. Um, and like I said, I can only vouch for the things that I've taken care of.
Yeah, I know.
That's all I can vouch for.
Okay. I just want some additional months out of it, I guess, but-
Once we get through this, that audit, you're going to, I mean, you're going to get a response from our auditors that will include what you're talking about. September of, of, uh, twenty-two through May of twenty-three. And that will be included in your forensic audit. If that's the dates you're talking about. That's before I came.
I think what you had asked, correct if I'm wrong, is adding the current fiscal year that we're in.
That would just be two months.
Starting October of twenty-three through, yeah, the end of this fiscal-
September of twenty-four.
Yes, ma'am.
It hasn't finished yet.
Okay, we're good.
And I mean, you can, you know, they hadn't even, they won't even do that audit yet. They'll come back, they'll come in, in July, and then they will come back one more time, probably after the first of the year in January, to go a little bit further if they found anything in their testing that didn't look right. Because they're going to start comparing financial statements, bank records, the whole nine yards. They'll bring all that back, and then they'll go a little bit deeper and start looking for other things. Once they're finished with that, they will present you, hopefully before March, because normally that's when you get it in, is in March. Yours will probably be before March because we're a year behind. Then they'll immediately get started on us again for this current year.
My question's been answered now. We, I clarified it, sorry.
We're good.
You good if we call for a vote?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. We call for a vote?
I have a request to call for a vote. Uh, Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
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 Motion passes five to zero for item C in its entirety. Going on to item D. Discussion to take possible action to adopt ordinance number zero seven dash two zero two four dash one two zero, abolishing the office of city marshal and amending the duties and responsibilities of the chief of police.
This was brought to the council on June eighteenth, um, in regards to cleaning up the verbiage that's in our ordinances. And so you've already, we've already discussed it, and unless you have any other questions, I'd recommend approval for this ordinance.
I saw something. Who appoints the chief of police?
I think you take action on that at the next, on the next item.
Well, no, but this, if this ordinance is set, okay, here it is, the chief of police shall be appointed by the mayor.
And, and approved by the council.
Approved by the council.
I don't know. I don't want to go through another incident like we had with one person has, I don't like the wording of that because it says appointed by the mayor. I want it appointed by the city council and approved by the city council. I want five people to be able to go through it, not to get it started, not just one person. I don't want to go through what we did already.
I see no difference in the wording, but we can amend the ordinance to the council because it currently says the mayor with advice and consent of the council, so the mayor legally by this cannot do anything.
I understand, but what we've been through before, I don't want to have any kind of chance of happening again.
Here's, and I get you, here's the difference. The council at the time should have said no, or should have said either yea or nay. They should have participated in the, in the-
We, we should have.
And I don't think that with the current city staff, that will ever happen again, honestly. I think that, you know-
I don't know, I just don't like-
People will be on top of it a little better than before, because, you know-
If we didn't have a lawyer say, shut up, he can do what he wants.
I know, I know. But you won't do that, will you?
Well, I think the language is the same, so.
You're not Wyatt Hammond and Finlay, right?
We're not going there. I know.
But, I mean, again, I agree, the language is the same, mayor by consent of council or city council. Again, but that's semantics, and if we feel more comfortable just saying city council, that's an easy change.
I do. Nothing against you, mayor.
I'm not, I'm fine.
I just don't want the mayor sitting there saying, I'm doing this, and I got a lawyer that do whatever I tell her to tell me to do.
When I make the motion, good sir.
I make the motion that we approve this with the change of, that we approve ordinance number oh seven dash two zero two four dash one twenty, abolishing the office of city marshal and amending the duties and responsibilities of the city chief with the change from appointed by the mayor to appointed by the council.
I second that.
I have a motion by Councilmember Cornelsen and a second by Mayor Pretend Mize to approve ordinance number zero seven dash two zero two four dash one two zero, abolishing the office of city marshal and amending the duties and responsibilities of the chief of police with the change adding or removing by appointment of the mayor and leaving it as appointment of the council. Further discussion?
Just to clarify, this doesn't delay the implementation of the ordinance, correct?
Correct. You're adopting it with agreeing with that simple amendment.
Okay.
Further discussion? Councilmember Yarborough?
Why are you laughing?
Because I got stuck on a name, okay?
Aye.
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 Motion passes five to zero to adopt ordinance number zero seven dash two zero two four dash one two zero, abolishing the office of city marshal and amending the duties and responsibility of this, the chief of police with the changes given to council. Item E, discussion to take possible action to appoint a chief of police.
Why do we have to do this? We have a chief of police. Or has he always been called the marshal? And we just don't know it?
So under the prior ordinance, you had a city marshal who also served as the chief of poli, of police. So by cleaning that up and conferring everything to the chief of police, you've essentially gotten rid of the marshal position, which means you don't have a police chief. So it's just a formality to make sure that you ha, you know, that if you want Cantrell to be the police chief, we formally appoint him as a police chief because that's the position that exists now. So you're just replacing, you're really just replacing verbiage, police chief versus marshal.
So something that I've been thinking about is, it's been very clear by multiple members up here, as well as multiple citizens, that a lot of people do not like the way that Chief Cantrell has obtained his position. And I think at this point, what we need to do is, we need to name him as the interim chief, and we need to open it up for applications. So I would like to make a motion to appoint Matthew Cantrell as the interim chief of police, and to direct city staff to open up the police chief job for applications.
Second.
I have a motion by Mayor Pretend Mize and a second by Councilmember Yarborough to appoint Matthew Cantrell as the interim chief of police and direct staff to open the position for applications. Is that worded properly? Further discussion?
How did we just turn this into a, to try to get rid of a police chief? I mean, we, we were just changing the ordinance, wordage, and now we're looking at deleting someone's position. How did that just happen?
I don't know how you, how do you get that, making him the interim? It's clear that-
Because he's been a police chief for how long?
I was answering your question, hold on. So the person who put this on was our legal team, right, was to actually appoint a chief of police, right? So nobody is trying to take away his job. However, every single director out there has had to apply for their job. They have had to go through possibly more than one round of interviews with the council and then been appointed by the council. It has been known for a very long time that he did not go through those steps. So to make it fair, to make it across the board what it should be, he should apply for his job and interview with the council. How is that not fair?
How long has he been an employee here? Approximately?
Ten years.
Ten years.
So ten years, and now, now you're going to call him on a, on the carpet for something that happened ten years ago? To me, this, to me, this is a little-
Didn't happen ten years ago. That's, no.
No, that's what I'm saying. He's worked here for ten years, so how long has he been chief?
Uh, before I got here.
Wow, great.
Twenty-two?
Sergeant, do you know?
Before I got here. Well, two years, you know, like, I'd say he's a year behind on, uh, it wasn't though I got here, he's actually a police chief in school. It wasn't often.
I'd like to call into executive session. Thank you.
For what purpose?
To discuss what we're discussing.
For legal, so-
Well, you have to have him and then-
Yeah, that has to be an option. It wasn't legally posted that way. But if you guys need some guidance on what the statutory provisions are and what your options are here on legal advice, we can certainly go into executive session for legal advice.
Yes, I would like that.
Is this a motion and a vote, or a run with it?
So you are allowed to always go under executive session, just as if it were posted for legal advice? So you, it doesn't, it doesn't require a motion to go into legal, to go into executive session for legal advice, but you can, some do.
I have a motion by, do I have a second? No, we're not going to do that. I don't have a motion. Pursuant to the Texas Open Meetings Act, Chapter five five one, Texas Government Code, Section five five one point zero seven one, consultation with an attorney on pending or contemplated litigation settlement offer or a matter in which the duty of the attorney of the government body, under the Texas Rules of Professional Conduct... I'm sorry, that's an old one. Give me a second. At seven thirteen, we'll be convening into executive session under item section five five one point zero seven one, consultations with an attorney.
Is that fixed it?
Yes. Yes.
The Godley City Council adjourned its executive session at 7:50 PM and reconvened into open session at 7:53 PM. There's currently a motion on the floor. A motion was made by Mayor Pro Tem Mize and seconded by Councilmember Yarborough to appoint Matthew Cantrell as interim chief of police and direct staff to open the position for applications. Further discussion. Councilmember Yarborough.
Aye.
No.
Aye.
Aye.
No.
The motion passes three to two to appoint Matthew Cantrell as the interim chief of police and direct staff to open the position for applications. Any items of community interest? Is there any further business tonight? The meeting is adjourned at 7:55 PM.
I'm trying, man. My wife wants to retire.
So your wife, she retired?
Yes. She's sixty-five.
Did you refer us?
Oh, yeah. What you got?
I think, I think we're back to fifth, but I think the kids go back. So we're all home on that. That'll fly by. She's always gone.
I like it.